I do, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day of life and we thank you for the blessings you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity we have in our community to come together and govern ourselves. And we ask that you would be with this political body and help them in every decision they make, which in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 4th, 2022 Winfield City Council meeting. We've got a swearing in, I guess you'd call it, of a new council member tonight, Eddie Posey, taking the license of Rusty Born. We've got Judge Darrell Burke here who's going to do that for us. We're going to go ahead and get that out of the way when we can go into our business, handle that for us, Darrell.
I can do that. Eddie, what do you want me to do with that? Do y'all want a good backdrop of the city seal? We good? Yeah, Asher, come up here if Asher wants to come up here. Which one of y'all wants to hold the Bible? Yeah, get Asher on this end, that way everybody's, you're not getting somebody's back. I don't have a good side to it, no matter where I'm at. So anyways, all right, I can get you to raise your right hand, should I put my hand on the Bible? Repeat after me. I, William Edmund Posey,
I, William Edmund Posey,
solemnly swear or affirm,
solemnly swear or affirm,
that I am eligible for the office of council member,
that I am eligible for the office of council member,
and will execute the duties of saying,
and will execute the duties of saying,
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my ability,
and that I will support the constitutions,
and I will support the constitution,
and will obey the laws of the United States,
and will obey the laws of the United States,
and of the state of Alabama,
and of the state of Alabama,
that I will, in all respects,
that I will, in all respects,
observe the provisions or the ordinances of the City of Winfield,
observe the provisions or the ordinances of the City of Winfield,
and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member,
and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
You're in. May God have mercy on your son.
Thank you, Eric.
See you guys.
We still need to stand. Yeah, we gotta stand.
No, y'all may be seated, y'all may be seated, y'all good.
Y'all have to excuse me. If I had to stop, I tried to quieten my phone down, quieten my phone system forward. Leaving the shop, shop's forward, to my home phone, my home phone's forward, to my shop, cell phone. I'm trying to draw, make sure intercept it somewhere there because it went forward. I think the C's because of the B. The C's because of the B question. Oh, yeah. I think that's our options.
If we serve us, we can do B over this right here.
Right, but can we do B without C?
No, we got, we, no, we can't do B without the first word in C. It's got to be the plague before we can do B, before the rest of C.
And when we're going to do this.
Then all we've got to decide is whether we're going to do that or that.
Right, we can do the other values.
Yes.
Let's go back to the regular meeting. First item on the agenda now is approved of council minutes from the December 21st, 2021 council meeting. Nobody's got a question or comment how those minutes are written, I need to ask for a motion.
I've already said anything for each two.
I'll say it's two. You are correct, you're one.
On the top of page one, it says, met on the first council meeting, it was the second. And I have that noted in my changes. And James.
She's got, down here, what I made the proposal on, doesn't know. Just got 10 hours, my, one time, 25% of taxes. Now, I'm not paying one time, 25% of taxes. What I said was that if they got a lot of songs or taxes, it'd be excess of 25%. There's a reason to do it by now.
Anybody okay with that? Anybody getting other corrections? Is that a minute for John to play? Tim, you got any other corrections? You were going to ask for a motion, go ahead and prove it. Second. All in favor. The next item on the agenda is Ocean Avenue. I think we've talked about this before two or three times. I need to, it's getting so bad that Ocean Avenue, nearly, on a passable, can't hold it, but the road is about totally gone. Get behind board, but turn it back over to the bypass road. I need to know if council wants us, if council wants us to see to repair that road and make it passable, or if we need to condemn it and close it. Eddie, man, we, uh, the school bus can't go through, don't need to go through that.
They don't care if you don't do it, sorry, they don't care.
They don't know hows or something.
They don't know that anymore.
This is the one that's the turn route to Abbey Place?
Cover that right side.
School bus and road.
There's no drops there. The school bus may drop at Abbey Places, but I mean, it comes, it goes, it come up by the armory, come around. If it come, if it turns on Thorndale, I think there's Thorndale there, you know, so if it turns on Thorndale, goes down the Nipple. I mean, it's already on Nipple, turn up, down the bypass road.
They ain't nothing on it.
Close it. We don't have no advantage. I mean, I don't, I don't know anybody who's, I mean, I don't know plan, no plan on both sides. It's okay, we'll be fine.
Don't we normally?
We might, I suppose, I suppose.
I think we normally, before we abandon the road, it's, I'm with existing road.
I'm just asking you, you know, if it's okay to do that, you know, before we go through the proper set, process of closure. Probably like Todd said, we probably set.
About that public hearing.
Before the closure, we'll work it that way, next public hearing, next council meeting, five, I think we need to do it at four thirty or five.
Is there any other way?
No.
Y'all depending is, is bad.
My house and that burnt thirty years ago, I guess it'd be.
I didn't know what was that. But we're done, they'd ask, James has made a motion for us to have the, to have a public hearing to close the road, to adjourn the cycle, all in favor. All right, the next item I've got on the agenda is scrap sheet metal. Uh, I wanted to burn this before the council, right now, from the debris from the storm. It's all been stored right down on the railroad property, south of town, which looks like my property because I got the pugs junk on it. Besides, I got more than a railroad does, railroad really don't have nothing on it. But that property belongs to the railroad. And Boyd Pike's got a little section in there. I need to, I thought, well, if you get with Todd, I think that what we might need to do, we've done it before with stuff, or took out Tiffin and different other buildings, or something that has any kind of monetary value, is to put it for surplus, to auction it off, or run an ad in the paper, or whatever, to take bids on selling that. What, I don't, I don't, we need to do it the right way to get rid of it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Todd may not give a little input on the proper way to handle that. But it is all, no debris from these roofs and the buildings that moved off, that's been accumulated that night in the state. Had, we had to have somewhere to put it, and that's the closest place to put it. So I need to, um, see if we can, if the council's okay to run it on Gov deals as, or run it in the paper for so many days, or vote, taking, to take bids on, which we don't go deals, but they'll take the bids, run papers, or they'll take silver bids to open for the next council meeting.
Of course. I'm not so sure we own it to sell.
That's what, that's what I said, Todd may have to elaborate, but we don't. If we don't own it to sell, if we need to contact who does own it and tell them to move it.
Because most of that's going to be involved in insurance, Tony.
Well, you're the insurance man, you own it.
I don't.
Insurance company don't want to do it.
I know they don't, but it's up to you to tell them if you're responsible.
Hi.
How did it get there?
From the cleanup, the state, the state put the biggest majority of it that night. Because we contacted, me and Brett, we contacted, because this state highway going this way, we're surrounded by state highways. And that, that was up against the clock tower, whatever, the state pushed the biggest majority of it down. They pushed it down in front of the Shire with the track hole with the, uh, track hole with Skid steer. They pushed it, then they pushed it off the side of the road down there. And then the other part of it was hauled down down. It was loaded by the state and hauled it. And what, what was gathered back here, all this is gathered right here by the, behind Pizza Bar, behind Strickland Corpus. Strickland, Strickland asked us to move it, and we, I piled it, our truck picked it up and we just put it down.
Will, will any of these local businesses that were damaged, will any of them be required to pay for the removal of that? Will the state send us a bill for that? Is that something?
I'm sending everybody, insurance companies, they have a certain amount of money. The main thing, what I'm getting at, what I'm at on it, is I volunteered my help and my equipment to help the state that night to clear it. And I volunteered my help and my equipment to clean up, as fast as possible to get it cleaned up. And it's setting, it's not on my property, but it's setting on railroad property. It needs to be moved. And I, I'm not, I don't want to move it again, I don't, I don't want possession of it, I want it away from me. I'm hauling around a truck out here. One lane, County Liver Pole still had a light on it. And that light was just laying on the, on the, down there with it, and I loaded it up. I've got that light in the back of my truck, but I didn't want to make the state, but I had a chance to get it robbed and give it to him. The state would actually ask if we'd seen one of the cameras, any part of that camera in that rubble, because it, let me see if they could not salvage, but the camera is very expensive. But, those, I well understood it. We, the grant that we got and the match that the city did, all that was paid for, not by the state, I don't know. It was paid for by the city.
In fact, we had the same agreement, agreement, they pay, pay all maintenance, huh?
Right.
Mayor, we kept the camera that was taken down yesterday, when they did the de-lapse.
We, we kept it.
We, we kept it. State took it down, but we kept it.
We got an insured, they belong to insurance company, if they pay us for it.
Yes.
But I just, you know, not knocking my business, but I just, we're about enough down there already without all that.
Can you say how much do you? See, to not, how much of that you would see in to not, so down there?
Well, it could be, they perhaps are that location too. Yeah, if it comes another storm, I'd go pick it up and take it. Trying to look at it? Yep.
I'm surprised it's still there, watching.
Yeah, they can't load it that easy. They've done a good job of this roof right here, probably net up, that's what it's laying out here. There's two roofs, one laying here and one laying against the air.
Is, uh, what's the name, Wayne? Is all that picked up in the alleyway?
Yeah, well, I hope so, they stayed there long enough. We've got much scotch, miles.
Yeah, scotch, scotch.
Yeah, most of that shingles, shingles.
I know they piled everything up in the alleyway.
Yeah, that, a lot of it landed there, they, they pushed it off that roof, a lot of it landed there.
Do we know who, know that either, what roof that was?
I can tell you the one that's painted.
I mean, our roof, part of our Christmas tree frame, this down.
That's another thing, I done had four phone calls, who was going to do it. And I got one, Mike, I think, a while ago, or somebody out there asked him a while ago. I don't know if he's him, that's Keith. That's another thing, I mean, that, everybody, that people went in that frame, in that Christmas tree frame. But that roof that's laying here come off of the museum, and one's laying here. The roof down there, that's from here, come off of Kenny Portadonis place. And then back this side, come off Pizza Bar, back over here this way.
Well, I'm not saying this is what I would, I mean, I would like to think about it, I'm not saying this is what I would necessarily recommend to the council. But I would say this, I don't think anything meets vision with it until we have permission from all of the business owners who may have an interest in that property, even though damage, have agreed to. And I think we ought to get permission from all of them and say, you know, give a release from it, say, listen, we can't, we got store. Do y'all want to come get, what's yours, or do you want us to just scrap it and, and try to get some money out of it for all the cost of cleanup? And if they say yes, then go forward, if they say, you know, no, I want my stuff, well then come get it.
They can't, you can't tell who to want.
I understand.
There's three big, three business owners that belong to it. One of them, I mean, and I count the, because one of them's seeding.
Yeah, because that's our Christmas tree frame.
And that's our Christmas tree frame and the, and, and the museum. That leaves, that leaves here, Strickland's and Boyd Pike and Jason March. That's the three groups. Strickland's is part of it, they had some, Jason's ended up behind theirs.
At a, at a minimum, I would get them to just authorize us.
When they ask me, they ask me. Sorry.
Give a release form, take my name, try. Probably no gun paper.
Some paper don't need that.
Make more than worth.
But, I mean, that's, that's why that's on the agenda, because that, that is something that needs to be dealt with.
Cinderella's later, I'm afraid.
Yeah, because I mean, I guess we're out of storm now, I don't know, don't want me back up on that thing.
But I would, I mean, I, I don't see that as being a problem, but I would really hate for.
I mean, we, you know, you could really get really down and technical with it. I guess they could be fine for leaving the roof in our road, hook it up against our building down here, I mean, you know. Your roof's against my building, your roof is on the fast time theater wall.
Another one, look, there's no value, you're benefit to one dollar now. Unless you've sent them certified on that warrant, the building came over, and you were able to report and try to have a challenge.
Well, I got an insurance man and an attorney here, so y'all know what we're looking at.
And then it's like someone's got the tree next year, they'll take, probably they'll just tear it down. I said, after God, if the building is certified, they're going to tell you, your property is in danger because of the tree. And that's happened, they're allowed to afford, because they're doing certified, they're going to.
Right, you know, that's the way I feel, like, no, it ended up where it did by accident, so it's, I think it's, it landed on state and city property. But if the insurance, if you're telling the insurance company needs to see it, but I hadn't seen it, they hadn't had no way of going down here and say, hell, my roof back.
There was a guy here, Thursday, taking pictures on the buildings.
Well, they're here today and Thursday.
Oh, well.
I don't think any of our insurance companies going to need to see it.
It's forgiven, all the way.
So y'all want to talk about it again in two weeks?
I, I think, if, if there'll be council's agreeable to it, I mean, I think it would be real easy, just to get those, those business owners to authorize us to do whatever we need to get rid of it. Just that simple, just authorize it to see to do, you know, whatever we need to do to get rid of that, 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 that debris. If it could be scrapped, it could be scrapped, if it can't, it's got to be hauled off, it's got to be hauled off, but just authorizing us to do that, whatever. If we think it's necessary, just get that debris back, we're, we're, I think we would, we have to do a break there.
Uh, I'd like the council to, if I can get that agreement from the ones we know that are, that is owner of the pile, no one's there. If I can get the okay from the business owners, I need the council to go ahead and okay me to run it in the paper, that we're taking silver bids and opening them next, at the next council meeting in January, four. I'm just trying, I'm trying to keep from it going on to another one. Scrap two things every two weeks. If we don't do it the next two weeks, it'll be first of February, so. So, if we do it that way, Todd?
If we get the authorization from the folks that might have an interest in.
So I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to reach out to the, the, the business owners that has lost the roof and the middle, and if they give me the okay to do away with it, I need to, I'm going to ask the council, will they give me the authority to run the ad in the paper? I don't know that it'd be, you think that we're putting on Gov deals, Mike, or no?
Mayor, what we did in a similar situation years ago, when Tiffin was being re-renovated and we had unusable scrap, we ran it locally to give local scrap yards a chance, if they wanted. We didn't have any interest at the time, and I think you wound up, and council gave you authority to, to get rid of it, knowing you had some cost of fuel or hauling or whatever. It wound up, when it's all said and done, you hauled it off. But we did give the opportunity through local advertising for other companies to, to give surprise what they.
Nobody's doing, nobody think that I, I got it.
I, I understand, that's why I want to make.
That's a lot of the mindset, I think.
Right.
And I, I like to clear the mind for.
Right, whoever gets it and hauls it off is going to have whatever, whatever expense to haul it off, whoever it may be.
There's not all that much weight, there's not many of them anywhere.
And that's what happened before, is there was not enough value because of the weight. Wasn't enough value for someone from Jasper in this area to haul it and it be worth them hauling it.
So now, would you do it as a whole or separate? Because I know, like, someone had expressed interest in the Christmas tree, of course, they would move all the other stuff, they're just interested in the Christmas tree.
Yeah, I mean, you, you want to separate that tree? And how you, several people showed an interest in that frame already.
Might get more fit with the rest.
Probably would.
Are those, uh, the, the poles that the tractor lights on?
They're down there, yeah, the, the County Liver Poles down there, the County, the lever part of the pole's down there.
And they're loading the rest of it?
No, that's cast.
It's cast?
Yeah. They cut it, they cut it, torch it, cut it off.
That goes back, one of the nature tree and the neighbor, the roofs is what makes them levers up.
I assume, I'm guessing, that's Canada also, we really don't know. We would have known, though, if the wind got into this roof, but I believe the roof could have been the wind.
Well, you know, it's like that Canadian said, it ain't, it's not that the wind is blowing, it's what going is blowing.
Right. You want to wash your thoughts on the tree, Todd? Got to do it right, just one goes, yeah.
My husband actually purchased a tree, and gave it, like, everything else, and gave it to the city. City houses it, listed it, ready to take care of it.
It's got, it's one section of it, it's pretty good. I'm, but, I'm going to be honest with you, that's why I figured I was asking about it, because they can, they can fix it and reuse it.
I'll burn Christmas tree.
No. I guess she has.
Do you have insurance on it?
Well, it falls in the property.
Yeah, we got it.
We got several things, we got to clean with that.
We got several things, we got to clean with it. But I might have to fix it, so when he can use it somewhere else in the city, I might report it, I might put it down there, or somebody you know that has a lot going on.
I think that's one reason, but we don't really have anywhere to put it, put it, in the shape it's in. I mean, I figured all the greens, it makes just the frame, the green's off, the green's gone.
If it looks bad, we don't go in here.
We can be sure of it.
We'll look some pretty ones.
I guess we can take them, we know that that belongs to the city, so Todd, since we know the city owns that, and the city owns those cantilever, cantilevers, we can put those, bid those to the employees, and when I add the paper and open that at the next council meeting, and then I'll get the okay from the landowners, the building owners that lost the roofs, and say okay, and we'll run those separately. How about that?
Okay.
So I'm going to ask, ask the council to put, allow, put in the paper, sell this Christmas tree, sale bid open by, to be open at the next council meeting, be turned in by five o'clock that day.
Think we can do all of it?
Huh?
Think we can do all of it in the next two weeks? The above of them?
Yeah, because I'm going to get the okay, I'll get the signed okay from the business owners tomorrow, and then we'll do it two separately. We'll, we'll allow the Christmas tree owner and go ahead and post it, the Christmas tree, and then the cantilever pole separate, and then we'll post the city owns those, and then we'll do those that belongs to other people, we're going to add statements, no, for this deal.
I mean, you only have time to run it in the local paper more time, because...
Well, all they do is go biz anyway, too, ain't it?
But I'm sorry, too much for tomorrow, and you'd only have the 12th before or maybe on 18th.
Read it, read it, never seen nothing yet. Then I'm going to, then I'm going to arrest him, but there's a lot of stuff in the paper. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask a motion to do that, in ten seconds, on a key second, all in favor. Next time I've got on the agenda is Ballard Builders contract, back last year, around in September, I think it was in September, where we started talking, doing talks in August, I think if we passed it, I think in the last minutes in August, the last, around the last time in August, meeting, we had, went into agreements with, with Ballard Builders to take and, to, to do the, what we call a commercial property, the entrance and the exit to the commercial property by state guidelines that we had bonded, we went to agree with them to fix that and move up and rough in a road from there to back to the industrial park property. They had deadlines, we set the deadline September the 15th, and then we moved it, gave them another extra month, and moved it to October the 15th, start that project, and then try to have it completed in 30 days. I need the council, because I don't want to come back on the old business, I need the council to, we've had issues like this before in the past, where we, we didn't get our end of the deal, or we felt like we shouldn't, that we were going to get our end of the deal. I need to know how the council stands on us voiding this contract, or we're going to just keep, we set a, we set a deadline, and the deadline's passed by two months, or three. I need to know if the council's going to continue to let the deadline lapse, and waiting for them to start this project, or if we're just going to call this, this deal off. We've done our part, working the deeds up, we did our part. But I don't know how long the council wants to keep going with it, with it, not getting, not nothing, not getting it started, if nothing happened. I have to look at the, here's the incentive agreement that we did. It's been quite a bit of work, it's been on this, our timing, Todd's spent a good bit of time, this is how thick this incentive deal is, it's got all the different things, how we agreed to it, promises between them, it's a city, a city shop, a bay, blah, 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 and that's, Ballard Shaw, that's a sole cost and expense constructed access point in Alabama Highway 129, such dimensions, y'all remember how that was? The cost of $296,625. Says, such access must be required and proved by Aldot, said construction to begin, owned before, owned or before September 15th, 2021, shall be completed, whether permitted within 30 days of said date. And it has a total estimated cost of $296,625. Now, it says rough in, access road along property currently owned by the city shall connect newly constructed access point to City I-22 Industrial Park. Rough in means, you know, just blocked, blocked, not paved and other, roughed in. Piled represents that it was commercially developed, the 26.84 acres of property acquired from the city pursuant to this agreement. Of course, it has in here that there will be reasonable purchase items from first development in the city and shall contract local, contract labor from such commercial property. Practical. Should be responsible for building permanent license fees, development shall use its best effort to have said commercial development, so said 26.8 acres, 84 acres substantially completed and sites available for lease or used within six months of closing or accusation. And it goes in here, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, that's where we're at. I don't want to come back to me, because it hasn't been started. I'm putting it on the council to either continue to agree to let it go, let the agreement be as it stands, and start at will, or pull the plug and let's look at other developments for that property.
Have they been contacted like as to why?
Correctly.
What excuse have they given?
Got to finish the lot so much right here, then we'll be over there, if you've ever hired a contractor or builder, but, you know, it's not a song and dance.
Was this not actually started, did you?
I don't know, it was started two years ago.
All right, I'll...
Sir?
It started before this.
What's the date on this incentive agreement? We got one, we're signed on that.
It passed two or three weeks, I didn't see it, it was about two months, I guess.
I have been starting, but y'all got this, this is y'all, I'm going to add it, y'all got one in this, September, November, October, July, 21st, yeah.
That's when the incentive agreement was actually signed, that was before then, because it went a long time trying to get incentive agreements signed.
Yeah, it was before then.
So, I mean, there was, there was discussions and negotiations a long time before we actually got the incentive agreement signed, and we got one signed, and then we had to get another one signed, because that one got misplaced or something, or away, no, somebody had signed it, so we had to come back and bring another.
I just don't feel confident. Now, I'm putting it on the council, because I actually, you know, worked on this deal to make this, trying to get our commercial access fixed, to help maybe, you know, move the development of that property along. Have you got that other agreement in here, do you give me that? As you well know, we have, we have had another agreement in place for that property, the commercial property, that has been, that this agreement can't be done until that other is done. And since Cove is here, this, I think this has been put on backfire. I don't, I just don't like stuff hanging out there, and hanging out there, and hanging out there. I believe in moving forward, I believe in doing what we say we're going to do, and let's, and let's do it, and let's not prolong it, because of that contract. We made an agreement, we gave plenty of time, it's like, if you got a, somebody leasing a building, and you let them go one one, let them go another one, another one, another one, and before you know it, it don't work with it, it's in a bad situation. I don't want this not coming to pass, this not being started, create a problem if we've got other opportunities for development of that property, if that makes any sense. I mean, that's our whole goal, is to develop those two pieces of property, the commercial property and industrial property, that's our goal, that's my goal anyway, to develop. I don't, and the reason for buying the commercial property before y'all was in, before y'all were in office, was to have something that we could offer to businesses that might want to come, instead of, to have a place for them to locate, try to, try to lure business on our property. Say that we've got this, and we wouldn't be landlocked, I call them the particular owner or anybody owning it, not wanting to sell it, or want to sell it all at one time to one person, we had it where we could offer to retail development. And we have tried, and we're going to continue to try, as long as I'm able to try, is to locate retail business on that commercial property, and we've done pretty good on the industrial, we're still working on several, two other, two other things, this, one thing was in the industrial part, was 20, 26 some odd acres for development, you know, and it's just like, we had, we had, we had started the deal before y'all come in, we'd started the deal, try to get another hotel on that side of the road, went through all this stuff, went through all these incentive agreements, went through this, well, long before short, it never came to pass, so it voided, we had to regroup, and that's no longer in the works.
Has the city ever tried to figure out how much it would cost to build a road through there?
The best, I mean, the best, it's $296,000?
$2,000.
That's, that's what, I had an engineer draw up, I mean, we had the drawing on the back, it's drawn up by Aldot, and how it's got to be, and the engineer working price of what it costs. Now, yeah, I'm okay with, I mean, I want to bring this up, I'm okay with tabling it to the next go around, and I'll reach out to the, to the, to the landowner, I'll reach out to both of these.
Motion table.
I just want the council aware that this is on my mind, and I think we need, we're starting a new year, I mean, I, I, I don't make new year's resolutions, but I like sometimes clean house and do things a little different, you know, get things, we've got to move forward. I don't like stagnate. But I've got, James is, I'm okay with him, you know, the kind of somewhat aspect that we make a motion table, where he can talk to him, and I'll talk to, to the developer, and see if that's going to be something that's going to happen or not, and then we'll bring it before the next council meeting. So I'll take his motion, and I'll ask for a second to do that table. All right. The next item on the agenda, let me, this old business, let me, before I go around the room here and ask for old business, because there's one particular thing I feel like's going to come up on the old business, his last, the last council meeting, we, the council had discussed about go ahead and take it out of the, what's the profit worth for that $500,000?
The rescue funds?
I don't...
Those rescue funds?
Rescue fund, the rescue money that the federal government has sent us, I'll get CARES Act, I get a few CARES Act, COVID, rescue, I got them all mixed up, I'll make sure you're the right term. The rescue fund money, the council, a couple of council members just showed an interest to go ahead and, given full-time employees, $1,600, I think it was, and part-time employees, $800, over a $10 an hour work period, for paying in that amount. And I kind of, I had asked, I didn't ask for a motion to, for that to pass, because I wanted to think on it a little more, and I wanted to pull the council before we done it. But, you know, the day, the day after, the day afterwards, the night of, I get a long text, I say, when I say a long text, it's more than three lines, but it's about this one, you know, on my phone, so I'll have to link to my phone, about, from a city employee that was very upset because that I didn't ask to bring that, didn't ask for vote, to bring it to a vote, to see if the council, see if the council would vote for that to be done. I don't, when I took this position, I took, when I took the position, I took the position of not having a personal agenda, and I, I don't, I try to always make sure that I'm not having a personal agenda about anything that we do here and translate to business. I think there's 20, roughly half the population went through the goes and votes, 20 something hundred, 23, 2400, 2600 people noted vote, I think it may not be that high sometimes, maybe lower than 1,800, but I have to look at the best interest of those 1,800 or 2,000 people that voted, I have to, because, I have to consider the best interest of everybody, not just one group. And then the very next day, I got that text, that night, the very next day, I had another city employee, it's always really, really nice, speaks, always walks, you know, glad to see you, and I go, well, I could tell, they walked in my place of business, I could tell when they come to the door, that there was something on their mind. I said, well, did you hear about the council? Yeah. I said, what'd they say? I said, what'd you hear? Said that two council members want me pass the, want me pass for the, for the workers to get 1,800 and 800. I said, yeah. I said, and what'd they say happened? Well, they said it didn't give, I said, did they say why? He said, yeah, they said you. I said, okay. So, you know, I, I knew, I knew by his expressions, I could tell, well, he had something on his mind, and when he come up, he wasn't the same person. And it really bothers me, bothers me, because, I mean, I ain't, I'm not giving it, I'm just, I'm not really going to preach, for a lot of times I get to sound like I am preaching, but when we're talking about X amount of dollars, and city people, and the city is involved in spending this money, whether it's given to us free or it's not, we still have to account for that money. And for somebody, for an employee, for being here nine years, for any employee to think that I don't have the best interest of that employee on my mind to start with, it really bothers me, and for get the text, and get that no speaking from me, and put me in this small town, which is a given town, and working with one another type town, and I, and I help any way that I can, anybody in way that I can, and for them to turn a face and not speak, and hang their head, and act the way they do, and send me messages the way they do, really bothers me. And it bothers me when it gets to where it looks like it's about me, 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 me. That bothers me, because this council, as young as it is, has already, and I say as young as it is, it's no longer than have been in, in offices numerous times, direct and looked at issues about employees' pay, and how things is handled with employees, and has done real well in supporting those employees and those issues. And it bothers me that somebody really shows their true colors and exactly where their heart is when it comes to something like that, that affects. The long, the, the big picture, they can only, people can only see the whole big picture when how things, why somebody might vote to do or not do something, but they could see the big picture. We, we, this, this money, it hadn't been cleared, but there's some things in there that is clear, how that money could be spent for, and that evidently must be one of them, because I heard that Russell done it, I heard that Hamilton done it, I heard that Guen done it, I've never based what we do on what somebody else does, or how they do it, I don't like that. Because they may have a debt that's 10 times worse than ours is, and then they don't care how they're going to pay it, I mean, if that's, I don't compare us to them. But there's, there's issues, there's, there's, there's ways that you know that you can spend that money, and we, we know that it's, it's infrastructure, sewer, water, we know those, and we pretty much clear now by research that you can spend... And we pretty much clear now by research that you can spend X amount of dollars for employees, the federal government, they have no problem sending money to the people, everybody's sending everybody a check, I don't know why they just didn't go ahead and give them their part of that instead of having the city to do it. That bothers me, but that's neither here nor there. But we got things that we know has to be done, that we have got to fix in the city. That's gonna cost X amount of dollars. HVAC system in every department, we got a HVAC system in every single department, and that, the way we put those back together, we spent five thousand dollars getting the plan drawn up to put those out for bid, we know that that, that's gonna be covered because of the type of systems that we're gonna put back in there, this clean air, whatever the makes it qualify, that's gonna go back in, that's in those systems. That's money we gonna have to spend, whether we spend this pile of money or this pile of money, we're gonna spend that money because we've already, we've already burnt the bush about not having enough heat up here at the library, and now, they got it now, and it qualified underneath this CARES Act money, the way it was put in, the system was put in, qualified for, for that to be able to pay for. The reason I'm saying what I'm saying is to get, long for short, try to get to the point is, we could spend that money for stuff that we know we got to spend, it makes the city more, more able down the road, instead of giving one time eighteen hundred dollars, maybe giving a dollar or two dollar an hour raise that's gonna last for the length of their employment. The city will be able to afford to do that. But if there's some chance we have to come back and we, and we're gonna have to spend this money and it takes our funds down so low, we can't afford to do that. That's how I look at the big picture, is it's better off in the long run if you can, if you can wait out and not get this Christmas bonus, so to speak, because it wasn't Christmas, picking a sire now because they didn't get to spend it on Christmas because it's done past. But I think that we really need to consider that money that we have got to spend on what we got to spend it on that qualifies, we got to have a sewer, we got to fix the sewer at the park, if we still have an issue with that that hasn't been signed, that will qualify. That being said, I want the council to, because I know it's gonna come up and I'm fine with it, I don't have, the way the council decides, that's how it is, but I, I want to spill my guts on how I feel like that we need to consider spending the money to keep us in a better financial shape for further, further use down the road. I mean, I have no problem, but it might, I don't have a problem giving the, giving the money to the people, to the workers, but my best of my knowledge, the library was, was cut at a certain amount of time that they worked, were open, the park, cut the hours and cut to different things that they done at the park, and I don't know that anybody missed a paycheck during COVID. I think everybody was able to get a check, they got their check during COVID, nobody missed no meals, nobody missed no money during COVID, they got paid. We got X amount of six days, and we waived a lot of the six days, I think on some of it because of the COVID situation, we worked with every employee, we didn't force no employee, Brett had several, several police officers out and had to sacrifice and do different things because of the shortness in that, in that department, but I don't know that we deprived anybody during that time. I mean, I'm okay with bonuses, because that's what it's gonna be to me, is a bonus for working, I guess, during that time. And I don't want to compare it to other places that didn't get a bonus, but, but we're not, because we're not talking about them, we're talking about the city. But to, to try to think how it might be better later down the road is what, is what I'm, mainly what I'm asking for. I'll, I'm not gonna be against the council for doing it, but I really like seeing people's true colors when it comes down to the nut and bolts of things. It really, really, it really, it's really pitiful, in my opinion. But that being said, we'll start over here with Keith, if you've got any old business.
No.
I was wondering about the, I know I brought this up a couple of times ago, the Delta Eight ordinance, only because it's been brought to my attention again.
What's that?
The Delta Eight ordinance that we had started the process to see where we stand on it.
I guess, the best answer I can give is it's, it's extremely difficult. I talked to some other attorneys and other municipalities that are doing the same thing over the past couple of weeks, and it's, I could do something tomorrow that, or I can have something ready tomorrow for the next council meeting that attempts to do something, but I'm trying to make it where not only will it do it, it will be legal and enforceable, and that's difficult. I'm just gonna say it that way. So. I think.
There are people all over the country struggling with this same issue.
Well, I mean, I don't know, have you seen this, I'm sure you have, have you seen that video?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What was, what was this guy messed up on?
That's what it was.
I mean, we knew we was gonna have a battle with that thought, but, but I, but let Todd, you know, try to handle it to where we can, do it in order to pass it, and when we have any issues later with it, I guess, is what we're trying to make sure that we do it the right way.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's very hard for me as an attorney for the city to recommend passage of an ordinance that I know on its face is unenforceable and not something that we're authorized to do. And it's very difficult to structure this in such a way that I feel like we do have the authority to do it. And I have spoken to, like I said, the last week, I've spoken to two other attorneys and municipalities that are doing the same thing, and we are all having the same struggles. So. It's a, it's a very difficult, it's a very difficult one to draft.
Just about gonna have to come from start to end. I'm going, my opinion is it won't ever come back, if God's above. If we look at the legality of it, it will never happen, it's all approved, the way the legal system works. It's all about money.
Well, the difficulty, I'll just be honest with you, the difficulty is the language in the, what is it, the farm, that farm bill?
There's no longer Delta Eight, now there's Delta Ten.
Yeah.
So they're gonna keep changing.
That would have, we'd have to keep changing our.
Whatever you restrict. When you, if you restrict it to the way that it needs to be, you're gonna, you're gonna go against that farm bill, that it's like. This is something that we knew was, was happening when they did that, that, that we knew was gonna, was gonna come into play. And it's happened. But there already, if you go to the service stations right now, there is a Delta Ten because some of the other states have outlawed Delta Eight.
They outlawed all Delta, they changed the name of.
And you can't, you can't outlaw the THC, I think it's what, because that gets into the farm bill, farm bill says it's okay. And ultimately, that's what, and I'm not trying to step by a line, but I, I think that's the, the problem. That's what gives you the effect that you get. And to do that, what, you know, if that can be done.
Well, it's just, it's, it's, it's really hard to do when state attorneys general all over, or on the other side of the issue.
I, I, I really believe that, I'm not speaking out of school here, but I believe the attorney general of the state of Alabama is on that side of this issue from the position that we want to take. So our, our ordinance would be in direct contravention of what our state attorney general says that we can and cannot do.
And the district attorney is on, is on our side, but he can't do anything because of the position of the state. They should just outlaw Delta Eight through twenty, that at least gives a year.
The other thing that I wanted to say, this is not really, I guess, under old business, I was just kind of wanting to make people aware, just because I've had a couple of people call me concerned that, that they're not seeing the ambulances anymore in town. And so I've had a couple of people call asking me, you know, where they are, have they moved, have they, and we did move, but as of right now, they are temporarily housed at the hospital, and the ambulance service is still here in town, it's just there now, basing out of the hospital. Which we were very fortunate that they had an area that we, we could move to.
Because they ruled their building unsafe to be.
That was just a concern that some people have had, is that the service moved out of town.
Seeing where the hospital is gonna be changing their name. You got a picture of it?
Yeah, they posted a picture on their Facebook.
I think that's a very positive thing. It would be called Northwest Regional Health, Member of UAB Health System. Maybe if they work in UAB, it'd make this come to pass, I think it's gonna be a plus for the community. Hey, I mean, you ain't got no.
I'm no the same soul.
Go ahead, James.
You'll have some nickmating that. You have an agreement where we're gonna sign with the attorney, and pay five hundred dollars, force a status on that?
You'll get it, yeah. I haven't, I haven't seen it, man, I haven't. I thought we'd already signed that agreement, I thought we already read it. The council agreed to it, but once I got the contract, I hadn't signed it, because I wanted you to look at it, I called, I talked with Keith Jones, who they called, and only his advice, I think, we didn't need to sign it, but we, I will, I'll sign the contract, the council's okay, we've got the contract, still got the contract here. I think one of the first things, we had an issue, we had one issue, one question, one thing that we wanted them to, I'll say was qualified, didn't, or how we give them, that what we was gonna ask is was qualified. So that was another thing, we need to know what, we want to know is qualified on that, with that, because that's the agreement, that in that five hundred dollars, they were, then it'd be, you know, what, two hundred dollars each time after that we ask.
The only thing I saw in there, I don't know, it was on page two, I think, I don't have it, looking at it, that after the first one, it was gonna be four hundred and about twenty-five dollars. If they had to spend, if they had to go out of town, they would be charging for mileage and motel rooms, food, and printing and copying papers necessary up and above the normal procedure, which I'm asking Todd, that's probably the normal procedure in the time. I mean, that's something, that's actually a different thing. Which I would imagine time to, I would hope that at, at point, that it kind of run excessive there, though at least nobody was waiting to then, understanding that.
We get that with five hundred? And then we're allowed to web yet to print it?
We're, we're, we get, we get the memo for the, for the five hundred dollars and then one, one request.
Yeah, a twenty-plus page memorandum discussing the guidelines, analysis of one proposed expenditure, including consideration of whether ARPA funds can be used, if they can be used, a draft resolution to authorize that, and if the answer is that ARPA funds cannot be used on the expenditure, a memorandum said before the findings about why. And once that's, once that's done, and anything beyond that's four hundred fifty dollars an hour, or a flat fee of four hundred dollars, four hundred fifty dollars, anything beyond that, it billed at two eighty-five an hour, plus tribal.
My question is, how easy do you think that twenty pages is gonna be to interpret it, or would we have to get someone to interpret it for us?
I guarantee everybody in this room can read it.
Can be very hard to.
Every person have something different about it. You wanna sign it?
I thought we agreed, but pretty much still.
I'll do that.
No.
I'm gonna get it.
We'll send it along to the council.
Yes, if we, if we sign the agreement, if you know.
It's on what you do. I know it ain't no business, but are there anything else we can do in town? How do I do them? All the lines have been done and now, they've been there, still wasn't no structural engineer to come and adjust or, insurance agents have been there to adjust. I'm gonna head, you know, we had five patrol cars damage, I'm gonna head and direct to Brett to get, to go ahead, we got pictures of everything, go ahead and get, get them asked, get asked on it, getting those ready, getting it, get them fixed. Does camera catch anything, Brett?
They all caught. Right on the power went out, and after the generator come on, it's about thirty-seven seconds. And then it goes back to the damage. I'm going to fix that, I'm gonna put it on eight, didn't know that I needed it up till now, but I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna put it on battery backup, that way it'll be good for three or four hours. That way, it'll be good for three or four hours, which all I need is long enough for the generator picking it up. Anyone that can, we'll have that one out. Now, the places that, where I've got cameras at the business, I don't know that I do about it, but the ones that I have here, that I'm getting at it.
Jackie, you got any of that?
Yeah. Mine as well, starting at last meeting, and I said I'd do it again this meeting. I'm bringing up the motion on the fight for employees. I know them, turn it down.
All right, I want to go back over to James's, uh, proposal that we, that we pay full-time employees, let me just let, I'll just let you go ahead and explain.
Sixteen hundred dollars over a spread over a period of time, which is four hundred dollars per pay period, based on ten dollars an hour. Eight hundred dollars for part-time employees, they say so, with how many hours it takes them not to see twenty hours pay period. Which is taking, uh, at least four pay periods each to reach the maximum pay dollar. And the reason I, I said do it over time period was because if you got the charter money at one time. You get the same, definitely the same in taxes.
We're going to do it, I'd rather just pay all of them at one time.
You kill, it's twenty-five percent return tax, twenty-five, thirty-five? The guy on that say do it on forty all nations?
I thought we was going to get a list of department needs before we go back to that.
What was that?
Yeah.
We have, to my knowledge, other than the air conditioning system. And we don't have all the specs on it to put it out to bid at this point. But as far as in, and then the parts sewer that's been dealt with, and I'm not the mayor making speak on where the engineers at on that.
He's got, he's got it ready to ask for three competitive bids on it. I'm waiting on it, three competitive.
But I, I don't, and you may have received communication from library or other departments. I have not received any requests or calls.
Book sanitizer.
Right.
What's all in it?
She had something about the roof, and there were several things with library.
But I'm talking about that might fall under the.
We've addressed a couple of roof issues since the storm at the library. Heard about being stocked up and different things, but they're taking care of that part for us. And have inspected it. Because we have your. All of the roofs was damaged, we've had damage done more than.
The library roof was in good shape, but then it was holding water because all the drains were stopped up, and they took care of that. He said, really, it needed to be cleaned up twice a year. So we're going to try to get a lot of rotation, because he's the one that actually did that roof off.
Fire department's been good too, to go up there and help clear leaves, so the water doesn't get backed up behind them. So they, they've helped some over the years with that situation too, if they're aware of it.
There's some regular maintenance made, they don't want to be, they would, there's no excuse, they wouldn't be around because they haven't thanked them. And lights are both making bigger plays. I think we need to. Annual inspection, we all see the bill, but that's, that's something else, that's like I said.
Eddie, you got anything you want to discuss about the eight, sixteen hundred and the eight hundred, eight hundred for part-time employee? You heard him explain how he'd do it over ten, uh, ten dollars an hour, forty hour a week. Over a period of time, that comes out of CARES Act money, the federal government sends us five hundred thousand dollars. Really to give a whole lot of guidelines on how to spend it. That is one way that we, that they have determined, I believe, that's okay to spend it toward employees that worked during COVID. And it'd be qualified.
Okay, so we do know it's, it's qualified, that can be done. But my other concern is, is what was addressed last meeting is. We might have to offer that amount because of all the other projects we've got in play, I would like to know what, what everything's going to cost.
So you're coming, you want a, let's see what, now here, let me, let me tell you this too, I don't know if you. But it's, to me, it's not there until it's there, but they have, they said it'd be another five hundred thousand in May. That came last May, there'd be another five hundred thousand this May.
This coming May.
Supposed to be. Be a total of a million dollars, I think, too, it was exactly five hundred thousand we got?
One point seven.
Yeah, one point seven is what we're supposed to get.
The total amount.
Total amount, that's what we're supposed, that's what we're supposed to get, we've got five hundred thousand of the one point seven.
Do we know we're going to get smaller?
That's what I'm saying, they say we will. But things can change, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that, but let me bring you up to speed a little bit about what projects that we are working on. Is HVAC in every department. Which we went ahead and done, we went ahead and did the library. We have this money, the five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty-something thousand, we have it in a separate account, in bank account. That we, we'll try to write, not write out of it. Projects that we know are COVID, we've already, we did about, was it eighteen thousand something down at the park on the sewer? But we still have a sewer issue that, that we're working on, that we've got an engineer that has brought up, they plan to bid out. To correct the sewer in the back part, to come at the back of the building where the sewer system stops. We've got it, where they went in there and stops, it's always through the whole building, so we're going to reroute. That's one project. HVAC, and then that. And then we, we, we've got a engineer looking at a pressure pump from, on Canal River Forty-Nine. To, because it's on Eber Drive, there's not enough pressure, the way that line loops through and comes through, there's not enough pressure on the. Last twelve, ten or ten to twelve houses back in there, there's not enough water pressure. They're looking in a booster pump system, and I think, I mean, I, they should have that about ready too, I think that's in a neighborhood of seventy-five hundred thousand dollars to move.
The book drop, what's coming out of this?
Yeah, the book, the book sanitizer.
Sanitizer, and then Regina was going to look at a.
Air purifier?
Like four, four of them?
Well, was her air conditioner premium, not have air purifier?
I don't know. With her circuit, this should have one, don't we?
But she was, I think we had asked her to get a quote for maybe the storm shelter, maybe the community center, and I thought maybe somewhere else.
There were estimated twenty-five hundred, I think, in US.
Three.
Four, five, three, four. Her mother, she didn't have anybody, she actually was never in my sleep, so she wasn't able to.
Because she was going to see.
She's still waiting on a few of the quotes, she didn't have anyone to stay with her mom.
Because the thing was, she was going to see if they would give a price break for the more. Definitely were interested in. And then this five hundred dollars is that, we're going to be able to take that out, this money, correct?
Yep.
How much was the book sanitizer doing there?
Does she have a price?
Twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, she did, twenty-three. The book sanitizer, she just gave one out?
Yeah, she just will get one.
Tim, you got any discussion coming? Like I said, I'm just kind of getting, I'd like to listen to if we've got pricing, like what the sewer or what everything is going to cost, and let's just see before we add. I believe, I hope, I mean, I, I, I believe, you know, we only push people so much, and I mean, I've pushed, and I think maybe I can have all those figures by the next council meeting. I would hope to have the bid, have bids on by the next council meeting. I don't know what I figured. If not, let's play golf. Let's just see before, see before we're out. Ah, see before we're out.
I think it would be fair to the citizens of. We, we knew exactly where all our money was at.
Regina, you got anything to add to it?
Um, I would just like to, if we do decide to table it or postpone it, do it in a way that we can bring it up again, I don't want to, I don't want to.
That's, that's what, that's what they're, they're willing, I think together from Keith and Tim and Ed, that's, that they're willing to, wants to see the total.
I'm not definitely not set against it.
Yep.
That's not where I stand.
I mean, I'll, I'll do my best to have the numbers of what we got listed. One way or the other. I have to get somebody else to give it for me. I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm like, I don't like keep keeping it down the road, we need to, I know what we're going to do and do it. If it's up top, we'll, we'll bring that up.
Do you know if the thing that the fire department was working on, were they going to continue trying to get that program, or are we going to see it qualified for this?
Oh, exhaust?
Yes.
I don't know, he ain't said nothing.
They won the grant, they're probably like.
I thought the law, see, what's going on there?
We only had to pay a small percentage, it was like, what, three thousand dollars or something like that?
They were that much, they were like twenty-six, twenty-eight, something?
The match.
Said the grant was a percent?
Right.
What was the total about the grant? Eight, nine, do you remember what the total price was?
I don't remember the total on that.
I'm thinking of eight.
I think it was eight, yeah, I paid, I did twenty-three hundred, that would have had facts out of that.
I think it was around twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three.
I taught you not bad, what it's give.
What's the R W S, I'm calling it scar.
I just wonder if they were, because they're getting part of it on the grant, if we would be able to use our part, take money for this, but we may not be able to do that.
You can make sure.
And I, yeah, I know. Well, and I was going to discuss the NYA building, but that's going to have to be put on hold right now. Because Main Street has got a lot of other issues to, to, that now have come in front of the NYA building.
God's storm, already one key shifted.
That's what I'm going to do today. Marquee on the.
I'm going to let them destroy it. I'm surprised. I'm, I'm surprised that the numbers and the phone numbers and their names stayed on it, stayed on it, it didn't.
We really did it before we get the straight. Put a lot of phones together now.
Started Keith opening around.
Officially taking.
Yeah, to the next, we'll, we'll make a, we'll try to make a point to make a decision on this next council meeting, I'm going to do my part to get the bid, what it's going to cost before we add. Have all that in place by then. But I think, I, I mean, I, before we, you know, close or go to the next item agenda, I, I want to. I don't know if a lot of. People can see who volunteered, who was working and did work or whatever, but there's a lot of phone calls that we got from people. That won't get recognized if I don't say something. And I, I'm going to name a few, but I'm going to try to name them all, it's going to be hard to do, but. We need to, we need to recognize these people. For their willingness to help, not only the ones that did help, but for the ones that were willing to help. Walmart stepped up as they always do. Big time. Which Brad and June know, they made a pretty substantial donation to Porter Supplies to try to help with that. At First Baptist Church and Gooit, that became Hardwood Baptist Church, and then of course, went to First Baptist Church, Methodist Church. Alabama Food Bank called this morning, I guess it was, or yesterday, the way the time is, I don't know, they, they, they sent four pallets of supplies up. Robbers and Escavators were willing to send any equipment that we needed. Fat Sand and Gravel were willing to send any equipment that we needed, Robbers and Redemix were willing to send a loader if we needed it. Hey, Charlotte was out of town, he had equipment, he said that we needed it to get it. Bellemont Sand and Gravel appeared on one twenty-nine off one twenty-nine. And I know, I know that I'll, I'll miss some, but that those things, those, those, you didn't see any of their equipment stuff here because we were fortunate not to have to have it. I want to commend the fire and the police department, how they handled everything. I mean, I just, I can't get over how unfortunate we was, I knew we was fortunate that night. But the next day, when you're really seeing stuff, you know, how the stuff got scattered and things have gone, how wide it was, and how long a period of time that it was in this area. Nobody got hurt, and nobody was injured. They just, everybody stepped up and done, I feel like done exactly what they're supposed to do, I want to recommend, want to commend. West Fielders and State Highway Department, they were here in a matter of minutes with two track codes, skid steers. Bucket truck, set of porches and stuff. You know, everybody couldn't believe us how fast that everything got cleaned up, got back, trying to get business back to normal. I want to recognize Greg Yates for coming in on Friday after lunch and must, that's building a wall for. An antique mall, because we weren't sure what that storm that's coming in was going to do if that wall was open like it was. It was eyesore the way it was, it was dangerous, they're leaving it open like it was, they come in. Plywood, the OSB, not plywood, the OSB was donated. I asked Alan to make a list of who, who the ministry. I can't remember what the name of the ministry that was, I don't know if my.
B Moore?
B Moore.
That has the big cabinet out here.
Yeah, yeah, B Moore Ministry bought it bottom of that, of that OSB, had Home Depot delivery up here, that's what we use down there. On that, securing that building. And all volunteers that helped Greg down there, I mean, they're just, I mean, everybody, everybody, that's why it went up so fast, there was so many people just. Went in there and took care of business and went on about their business. Southern Baptist Disaster Relief, I believe it's Southern Baptist Disaster Relief out of Jasper. They come in and want to know about trees, and we sent them to residents. They were sending down the continent, we did that thing, they know here by the church over here, and we sent them to their places, but they're still. They're talking about coming back tomorrow, I think it was, I think they were talking about coming back tomorrow. They stepped up and helped out big time, and, and of course, Michael, the hospital, the house, but the ambulance service. They stepped up and, and helped out big time and, and of course, Michael, the hospital house, but handling service. Right now, until they do something different, find another location, they're housed over at a hospital, this is the old, your was.
The old ICU.
The old ICU area that housed there right now. We had donations from who was it, Brett? What was, Jax, was it Jax, Fender?
Jax, Subway. Had Subway, yeah.
Jax McDonald's and Subway.
Jax and Subway, both.
Big Fellowship helped with the feeding site and Thursday and things too.
You and First Baptist Church, length of First Baptist Church supply.
I'm, and somebody, people have ordered, large order of Subway to put the vendors down here. That's how far out people. Yeah, yeah, I can't, like I said, I know I'm gonna forget one, but the ones that I know is I can remember. That, I mean. West White says gonna hit it at six forty-six, and I know everybody's heard me say it, home team downtown, it's what time the clock's off for six forty-six. What's when it hit, Brett called me, I think, is at six fifty, said mayor hit downtown. That quick, the police was here searching cars, looking in cars, making sure everybody was okay. And before I could get my shoes on, got to get here, by seven o'clock, I'd done had eight or nine phone calls already from other soldiers, sent police officer two, I think, up. Bridge Fire, Fed sent, looked like their whole night shift or whole day shift or something, they sent all their firemen, they sent several firemen up here from Fed Fire. Hackenburg, Mayor Call, I don't know if there's anything they could do, Hable, Mayor Call, Hamilton. And of course, you know, Brett sent a picture, but Jefferson County Sheriff's Department brought some inmates over here to help. They don't know if there's anything they could do, and I told mine, mine was small businesses that needed, that lost a roof, that needed some help. And they came in and made an appearance and done several clean up, little cleanup, helping remove, remove some trees and stuff. But it, I mean, it just, it was amazing, you know, the calls as quick as they was coming in and and, and the, the, the next day, on Saturday, when it's supposed to get again Saturday, forty-two news up here, and they'd asked me to come up here, and I came up here. There were no cars on the road, people had sense enough to stay in or get in shelter with the warnings that we had. And I, I think that that's, you know, the technology that we got, people paying attention to it, if we just give them enough shelter up here quicker and shut the door to wait, and look out the placement door, like Sam was like to do sometime, if we can see it or hear it, but I'm about, I still don't think that we've got enough safe places. My opinion. I don't know that if that's something that the next round of this CARES Act money can be useful, but I feel like there needs to be, I feel like there needs to be one, it's not, that needs to be on this side and on that side of town for sure, that one, there's a shelter out here, a lot of people don't know about, about Tiffin. Cause I know one of the people lives on that road where that lives, was in the shelter, said they barely made it, there was one there.
I had several folks there that called Saturday, called and texted, and we, we got a lot on our Facebook page wanting to know about location of, of where, so that's a, you know, there's one that, right, right behind Bobo store. We need to give a little store, that's, uh, some, some folks from Carter State that was, that was calling and asking about it, but I think that would be a good idea.
Same, he usually posts us about that and the Bobo, cause he's, well, it has no lock door and everything.
Is that one usable?
It'd be a good thing to put in the newspaper.
It is, it's just small.
Yeah, it don't hold like thirty feet.
I'll load it, hold it.
No, that's the Inverm, over there. You took ten thirty in there, Fisco?
Oh, you fixed it on that.
You sticking in there like a stone.
I still have, we need a couple more, at least a couple more up here, up this way, I hear, with the, around, with all the, with it, cause we've got all these apartments that that's been built, right over the crossroads, you got the housing on that side, you got the parks above the baseball field, you got the housing projects. I mean, some people can't, and there's not a whole lot of parking, I mean, there's not a whole lot of.
Well, I was gonna say something about that, that was one of the issues that we had, Mayor, and I don't want to fix that. Cause you had a lot of people coming in there, just right there at, you know, ten, fifteen minutes. Right there at the end, when they started giving the warning, and we had to actually, after I made my way up here to make sure everybody was okay up here. We had to move vehicles, and a lot of the vehicles were damaged, you know, one of the vehicles had too much forward through the steering column. Luckily, it was out of the way, it wasn't an issue, but if it had been some of them, there was two or three vehicles that were parked in the road. And there was only one way in and one way out, which would have been the two fifty-three side, there was no going out. On the one eighteen side, it was completely blocked, and people just parked. And, you know, that, it's like we, we had guys here, I had Eric was here, I mean, not Eric, I saw Dean was here, and Rusty came by here and was helping with, with what was going on, but they, it must have been good until they got to tell it back seriously, and they come down and start watching the weather. But after that, I had to get two, I got a, a few police officers and a couple of other firemen to, to help me maintain what was going on up here, make sure they could take care of any need that was going on up here, just long enough for us to get it cleared, cleared out.
You, you had asked me on the live there, would you say something about the, I want to get, you say something about the Fed, the National Guard or not? You had a comment, you said somebody called, and I don't believe it.
Yes, they, they did, and they actually seen it. I know two, I think, folk that, that actually stood guard down at, at my place, at the antique mall, which freed up my guys to do other things.
Yeah, I'm just glad, you know, there's a grammar guard, look at, there might have been some woodings going on, but I verified and cleared that with, cleared that up with the property owners, they were actually on the property when that was supposed to, supposed to have been happening, but somebody then knows and it kind of appeared that it might be a looting situation. I don't, don't know that there was any reports of looting, was it correct?
That was just that big, it, it, I'm offering.
I mean, it's just, tons and tons of people helped, I'm sure I missed somebody, but I want to recognize those that you know, stepped up the plate to, to help, to help out. I hope we don't have to go through it again, but, you know, that's an eye opener, and kind of gives us ideas, not strong to believe, we need to be able to, to put about two hundred more people in shelter. My opinion.
Kenny Hallmark.
Hundred on that end, and I believe a hundred on this end.
Kenny Hallmark was a big help to me that night, he set up, I set up, answered the demand with the firefighting. Cause we had power, he immediately came in and took care of everything for me up there so I could stay down here. And that was huge for me, he, he took care of everything because the chief's association and the sheriff's association were all up there. And we were able to get to me up there, and I met with him up there.
I mean, it's like, you know, of course, I was down here with, I don't know if you left an officer, then I believe you made it to a call, officers. But I was down here with the state. It is kind of like that y'all had went to, to give them more room, or whatever, that everything just worked out real well, like
Right.
Control, I mean, being able to do, you know, nobody in the way, and things going the way it needed to go.
Well, Wes had, had told me that there were gonna be a lot of moving parts down here, and if we could just make sure to keep the perimeter. So that was a good time for us to go up there and kind of regroup.
Worked out real well, cause I know, everybody knows Kenny Hallmark, but he, I witnessed what he had to deal with when he was, he was the chief of police, I think, when it hit Hackenburg.
That's true.
And that he, he had to deal with ten times what it was here.
I don't think, was police station in fire department? For a much longer period of time. They, they, they lost all communications, and that's one thing we didn't want to do was bad. Which we've been talking to Tracy, Estes about it, about the governor helping us with that, but we still did have communications where Hackenburg had none.
We was fortunate, we just need to look cut it where we've been prepared, you know, prepared for it to be worse the next time, if you can prepare for that. You know, I feel like we need to do, see if there's ways that we can help maybe get grants or funding or something to, to put the shelter on that side with with all the, you got the apartments, bankhead apartments, you got Walmart, people in Walmart, you got Metalwood, Brentwood. You know, all those subdivisions over there, don't everybody have a basement?
Yes, I know several people from Metalwood that was, well, they waited too late, they were headed over here and got stuck over there, but they said a lot of people blew up there, come here from the storm shelter.
Well, if they were dispersed out like that in, in other places, that would take care of our.
Got a crowd in here.
Yes.
Um, Wes got nothing else, I need to ask for a motion to pay the bill. Tim, raise motion, second Gina, I'll. James, you in favor of that?
Hey, just raise your, everybody's just saying.
All right, everybody's got nothing else, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. No, the session, I'm gonna have a motion, Gina, I have a motion. Keith, say all in favor of it. Appreciate y'all being here.
Check on that. I go pretty much if they have most of the.